Okay, I feel like a whole person had one monitor. You have one.
Yeah. That's good.
Oh, that's nice, that's what I said.
We contributed.
Wonderful.
We contributed.
Okay.
So they moved it themselves again. Well, you done came out. Okay, there you go. There you go. Oh, how you get that in there? I just got a hit, sir. You go, Graydon. I agree, so you can hit right there.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It is my pleasure to call our meeting for July to order and to see those of you who are here. This is vacation time and nothing wrong with people being out during the month of July, is it? Means that they're somewhere enjoying themselves, we hope.
Enjoying vacation.
So at this time, as we call the meeting to order, I should like to ask was a motion to come out of closed session.
Whereas the Franklin City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
It's properly moved in second that the Franklin City School Board did convene in a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of Virginia Freedom of Information Act and that we convene according to Section 2.2-3712G of the Code of Virginia that requires the certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge that we only acted on and discussed or discussed those items as cited in 1 and 2. You've heard the motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is carried. I would like to ask Mr. Counselor who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Counsel.
Thank you.
Roll call, Madam Chair.
May the God honor your birth of Jaxson Gator. That's on your own here.
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 Thank you, board members. Thank you. Are there motions from the closed session?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the personnel agenda.
Second. It's properly moved in second that we approve the personnel agenda. You've heard the motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is carried. Is there another motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept non-enrollment applications 07012016.
As second.
It's been properly moved in second that we accept the non-resident application for enrollment in Franklin City Public Schools, 07012016. You've heard the motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is carried. Thank you. The organizational plan of the school board, we shall discuss this at this time, and it does involve item number one, election of chair for the year 2016-2017, the chair of the school board. Mr. Williams, will you carry that particular section, please, for us?
Yes, ma'am. All right, it's the policy of the school board and of the state that a chairperson be selected each year, so what I'll do is open the nominations for a person to serve as chair of the school board, if anyone would like to make a nomination.
I would like to nominate Edna King for to be the chairperson.
Okay, I have one nomination, are there any other nominations?
I nominate Andrea Hall Leonard.
Okay, we have a second nomination, are there any other nominations? I'll ask one more time, is there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close the nominations. We'll do this as a hand vote, if you would, please raise your right hand. All those in favor of Edna King serving as the chairperson, please raise your right hand. I count one, two, three. All those in favor of Dr. Andrea Hall Leonard being the chairperson, please raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, so Mrs. Hall, Mrs. Leonard, you are the chairperson for the upcoming year, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Dr. Leonard, I'll ask you if you want to take over at this point and select a vice chair. You have to select a vice chair. It comes at you fast and furious.
At this time, the floor is open for nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Will Counsel.
Any other nominations? I'd like to nominate. I'd like to nominate Ms. Verda Jackson. No other nominations? At this time, all in favor, Mr. Will Counsel, would you please raise your hand? All in favor for Ms. Verda Jackson? Okay. I believe, Mr. Counsel, we have three, and Ms. Jackson, four. So Mrs. Jackson, and Mr. Williams, you may have to help me with this, Mrs. Jackson will be our new vice chair. Moving forward to continue with our 2016-2017 organizational plan of the school board, we have in front of us the plan in reference to the committees that we agreed last term to serve. We would like to know at this time, are there any changes?
Madam Chairman, I was on two committees last year. One is the Personnel and Finance Committee, the other is a Health Advisory Committee. We've never met at all, so my question is, do we need those committees?
Your question again, Mr. Holt.
I was on two committees last year, Health Advisory and Personnel and Finance, and we never met at all, so my question is, do we need those committees?
I believe that's a discussion that we would have to have as a board.
Well, with the Personnel and Finance Committee, usually that is, especially with the finance during budget season, usually those persons meet with the team to look at the budget, and you take a view of the budget prior to submitting it to the board. However, we have the budget work session and our entire board makes decisions on the budget, so we do it collectively instead of just having a committee.
Would it be beneficial to have a couple board members when you're speaking with your, you know, staff is, you know, getting together the budget? Because I'm sure you always discuss it before you bring it to us, and then we discuss it after.
Yes, we discuss it, yeah, we discuss it. I don't see where it'd be a harm.
So that would be something that...
That we could, you know...
They could be invited to a couple of those work sessions that you guys have with your cabinet or whatever.
Yes, yes.
Or maybe we should do that. I mean, I'm assuming that's probably what was done in the past.
That the committee itself would need the staff when they are...
Yeah, I mean, that would be the committee that was putting together the budget, and you can do it with your cabinet members, correct?
Correct, cabinet, finance.
And that would be a time that these additional committee, the school board members that are on that committee could be invited to that meeting.
That's correct.
I think that's probably a important thing to have.
I think it is too, and I'd like to see us keep that, and I'd like to see us keep the board members on that.
And be invited to the work sessions that your cabinet members have to get to that meeting.
Okay, now, any other discussion? I believe we need to back up to the clerk of the board and deputy clerk. We need a motion for Mrs. Pamela Kendrick to remain as clerk of the board, if that is the will of the board, and Mrs. Gail Wade to remain the deputy clerk.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second for Mrs. Pamela Kendrick to remain as the clerk of the board, Mrs. Gail Wade to remain as deputy clerk. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the motion is carried. Any other changes or discussion on the organizational plan? Me personally, I would like to remain on the committees stated, that's the alternate voting delegate, school board representative to the pupil personnel committee, student discipline committee, and Franklin Southampton Early Childhood Council Smart Beginnings.
You are the voting delegate now.
Yeah, you are.
It doesn't have to be though. It doesn't have to be.
But I think that traditionally it has been the chair.
Traditionally, it has been the chair, so thank you for bringing that out, pointing that out to us, so I'm going to ask Mrs. Jackson, you're now the vice chair, so would you like to be, is that okay with you? To be the alternate voting delegate to Virginia School Boards Association? Is that okay with everybody else? Mr. Williams, will we need a motion for that?
Yes, ma'am, if you're doing the motion, it seems like so far that you are.
Okay, all right, well, at this time, we would entertain a motion for, to make the change for Mrs. Verda Jackson to serve as the alternate voting delegate to Virginia School Boards Association.
It's second.
It's been moved in properly second that Mrs., our vice chair will serve as the alternate voting delegate to Virginia School Boards Association. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the motion is carried. Any other changes?
Presence Committee, I don't know if that still exists, Franklin Presence. We have Mrs. Garble, the vice counsel designated as representatives for that particular group. I don't think that it has been meeting, so, and I don't know if it still exists. Do you want to just eliminate that?
I think that would be a good idea, probably, and if they bring it back up, we'll go from there.
Okay, at this time, we'd like to entertain a motion to eliminate from the organizational plan Franklin Presence.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second to eliminate Franklin Presence. At this time, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. I believe that concludes the discussion on the organizational plan.
Actually, Dr. Hall Leonard, I think you still have to, assuming...
For everybody else?
No, I think, assuming that Dr. Bell's gonna be your agent and Mrs. Wade is gonna be the designee.
We voted on designee last month.
You did those last month.
We did.
Short-term memory loss. They're done then, okay.
Next item on our agenda, 2.7, V S B A Code of Conduct for School Board Members. Dr. Bell?
With the Code of Conduct for School Board Members, each year this has to be reviewed and read at the meeting, so it indicates that the school board addressed this and has it in the minutes, so at this time, I would like for Mrs. Kendrick, if she would, to go through the V S B A Code of Conduct for School Board Members, and if we could read each one, and then at the end of the meeting, Mrs. Kendrick will pursue signatures from each one of the board members.
V S B A Code of Conduct for School Board Members. As a member of my local school board, I will strive to be an advocate for students and to improve public education and that, and to that end. I will have integrity in all matters in support of full development of all children and the welfare of the community, Commonwealth, and the nation. I will attend scheduled board meetings. I will come to board meetings and form concerning the issues under consideration. I will make policy decisions based on the available facts and appropriate public input. I will delegate authority for the administration of the schools to the superintendent and establish a process for accountability of administrators. I will encourage individual board members to express, board members' expression of opinion and establish an open two-way communication process with all segments of the community. I will communicate in accordance with the board policies, public relations, and opinions regarding school board policies and the school programs of the full board as a process. I will bring about desired changes to legal and ethical procedures, upholding and enforcing all laws, state regulations, and court orders pertaining to schools. I will refrain from using the board's decisions for personal or partisan gain and avoid any profit or interest or interference in this matter. I will respect the confidentiality of privileged information and make no individual decision or commitment that might compromise the board or administration. I will be informed about current educational issues through individual study and participation in appropriate programs such as those sponsored by my state and National School Boards Association. I will always remember that the foremost concern of the board is to improve and enhance the teaching and learning experiences for all students in the public schools of Virginia. Therefore, I will always strive to demonstrate the code of conduct as a public school member. Each member must accept this code and adopt it as a candidate.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Kendrick. Next item on our agenda is 2.8, is the approval of the agenda. We have a motion at this time for approval of the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second to approve our agenda tonight. We've heard the motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. 2.9, good news.
Madam Chair, board members, at this time, Mrs. Wade will come forward with the good news of the evening for best student attendance and best teacher attendance.
Good evening, Mrs. Hall Leonard, and board members and Franklin community. It's my pleasure to announce the best teacher attendance award for the month of June 2016 and the best student attendance award for June 2016. Well, Dr. Davis, our new principal at S P Morton Elementary, Mrs. Francis, J P King, and I don't know that we have a representative from Franklin High School here tonight. I'll begin with the teacher attendance award. You know this is awarded each month to the school who has the highest percentage of teacher attendance, that's our certified professional staff. This month, June 2016, it goes to J P King, 94 percent. And next, the student attendance award for June 2016, this was maybe a record, 99.1 percent student attendance, and it goes to Franklin High School. I'll make sure that that trophy gets back to Franklin High School.
While we're under good news, Madam Chair, board members, if you will, give me an opportunity to introduce formerly our new principal of S P Morton Elementary School, Dr. Cherie Davis. Dr. Davis, would you come forward and, and address the board and just tell them a little bit about yourself, even though we know on August the 16th, she, we have a program that has been, that is being put in place for the community and everyone to come meet Dr. Davis, but right at this time, let the board know a little bit about you.
I'm Cherie's chair of the board, Dr. Leonard, and those assembled. I am Dr. Davis. I come from Southampton Village School. I was administrative there for three years. I have 14 years of educational experience. I've been very, very busy since July 1st. I'm here at Franklin City Public Schools, I'm glad to be back. My first teaching experience was with Franklin High School back in 2003, and as Dr. Bell said, I'm receiving a postcard in the mail which will introduce you to, to invite you to our community day, which is meet the principal day at S P Morton Elementary, where we're gonna invite everyone to come out to meet the principal, have a little fun. We plan to have bounce house for the kids, and just, you know, just a formal introduction, but have a little fun at the same time. And today, we had opportunity to visit four of our areas here in Franklin, which was Forest Pines, Berkeley Court, Dorchester, and we went to Newport Village and Puddle Gardens to give our books today, so we had a good time doing that. It was hot, but we went out and the students were glad to come out and pay the books, but I am very, very happy to be here and I look forward to serving the students of S P Morton Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis.
Okay, welcome, Dr. Davis, we're glad to have you. Our board clerk at this time, do we have anyone for citizens time?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Okay. So we will move now to 3.1, actions to approve the minutes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve minutes for Tuesday, June 7th.
As second.
Okay, the motion has been moved in properly second to approve the school board minutes for June the 7th, 2016. You've heard the motion, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
Thank you.
I wasn't.
Then the motion is carried. At this time, we'll have, entertain a motion to approve the school board meeting minutes for June 16th, 2016.
Madam Chair, I would like to approve the school board meeting minutes, June 16th, 2016.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been moved in properly second to approve the school board meeting minutes for June 16th, 2016. You've heard the motion, any discussion?
I have one concern. Under good news in our last meeting, I mentioned special recognition for Mr. Jason Chandler and asked that it would be spread across the minutes, and it's not there.
Here, our board chair will make that correction.
I think it has to be in the full number of amendments.
We need a, an amendment to the motion to approve the school board meeting minutes for June 16th, 2016 with the addition of the information about Mr. Chandler.
Madam Chair, I'd like to amend the school board meeting for June 16th to be approved for Dr. Chandler's...
To add the information?
To add the information for Mr. Chandler.
Can we get a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved in properly second to amend the school board meeting minutes for June 16th, 2016 to add the information about Mr. Jason Chandler. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the motion is carried. Thank you. At this time, 3.2...
We have to adopt the minutes with the amendment to include the amendment. We need a motion now, I think, to approve the minutes with the amendment.
You adopted the motion to amend.
Right.
So now you have amended amendment, you have amended minutes that need to be adopted.
Can we get a motion?
Yes, I make a motion that we amend the minutes to be adopted.
Second. I think what we have to do is to make a motion to approve the minutes for June 16th, 2016 with the amendment.
Can we get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you so much. The motion has been moved and properly seconded. You've heard the motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, any oppose? The motion is carried. Item three point two, financial reports and updates, Dr. Bell?
Madam Chair, board members, at this time, Mrs. Jarrell will come forward with our monthly financial vouchers, our June report, as well as where we are with QZAP.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Bell? May I appoint the vouchers to June for the school?
And board members, you see that the financial department has worked hard in revamping the voucher system so it gives you a better description, as well as the line items where these purchases have been made.
Dr. Bell, the weight room equipment, did we, we approved some last month also? So this is additional?
Yes, sir.
Any questions or any other discussion in reference to the financial report? If not, at this time, could we entertain a motion to approve the financial report and updates?
Vouchers.
Motion to approve the vouchers. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded under the financial report that we approve the monthly financial vouchers. You've heard the motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Then the motion is carried.
Can you add the board's financial report and the school report? Are there any questions?
I did talk with Mr. Clyde Parker about Charles Street's gym roof. And in so doing, as of today, our application or his application for state historical preservation of that building was being considered. There was a committee meeting today, and he's thinking that he should know whether or not that gym would be so designated for historical preservation, maybe within the next week or so. And Dr. Bell, I suppose that he will talk to you when that decision has been made. And he does feel as though that there's going to be some expedited movement of the board, of that committee, to maybe come down, visit, to see the gym, and then determine the status of it relative to it going on the register for historical designation. I guess, and I'm saying that because the money that we have earmarked for the roofing probably should stay so designated until maybe, I guess the money has to be expended by September two thousand seventeen, isn't it? September two thousand seventeen.
And that's what I was getting ready to form the board, even though we have it later on in the agenda. But since we're on that topic, we have to expend that money by September two thousand seventeen. So we have earmarked one hundred thousand. So the board can decide if you would like for Mr. Costa and the team to move forward on looking at a RFP for construction of the roof, because the roof was the major item. And remember, we had talked about the facing on one side also. So if you want us to move forward, we will. On looking at who can make that repair under the, we're looking at what we have already appropriated and earmarked for that project.
How does that work, Dr. Bell? We've been waiting a year, I guess, waiting for the, for this board to make a determination on, on this gym. Shouldn't we wait to, if it's going to be a week, two weeks, shouldn't we wait to hear that before we decide tonight to go further? Or should we go ahead now, because it's going to take a period of time to get a contractor?
Well, if we're going to, in two, in a couple of weeks, we will know. But we could start the RFP process to get the information. So if we decide to actually move forward, have all that taken care of, those bids.
I mean, if they get the historical whatever, do you know what criteria we're going to have to meet already, I mean, in order to even do the RFP?
They don't have anything to do with what we do with the, they don't have a problem, as I talked to Mr. Parker, about the upkeep of the building. For if we do the roof repairs or the, or the side where the brick was deteriorated, they are fine with that. The only thing that they had an issue with is if we were, if we were trying to recreate something with the building. As long as the building stays the way it is, and we make certain repairs, they don't have a problem with it.
So we put any sort of product on top of it?
Well, you know, we already have done, but heating and air already, yeah.
Well, heating and air would have been, that's like some interior repair, is it not? I think when something is considered for historical preservation, you cannot, you have to be careful in changing the exterior.
The exterior, and the exterior won't be changed.
And I'm wondering if the roof will be part of that exterior process, well, considered as a part of that exterior change, I don't know. In some instances, the historical preservation committee has looked at even the material.
Let me ask Mr. Costa. Mr. Costa, come forward. Mr. Costa's been on that roof, or he's been near that roof.
And he provided a detail.
We're going back to the flat roof. We're just going to be using newer material with the upgrade and stuff. And I don't think that'll affect the historical exterior of the building, because they don't even be able to see that. It's actually pre-flipped a little exterior.
So they won't be able to see it?
Won't be able to see it. Another way you would do it is if you decided to put a mainframe roof on it. We don't have enough money to do that, right?
The longer way to lay.
I've met with Mr. Parker that many times, been through the building. We're good with anything we do. Our main concern is the walls. So if we spend the money, we're going to have to find, fix the walls. We're wasting the money. So that's what actually explains.
So is it leaking, the roof leaking?
We have several leaks in the core. We keep the, we keep the down spots all clear, and it doesn't leak very much. Yes, at least. We put lots of action.
The letter that Dr. Bell sent us from Mr. Parker, I kind of interpreted like he wants us to go ahead on him and start working on the roof. I mean, I don't know how everybody else interpreted, but I kind of got that feeling that he thought we should go ahead on and start before it gets worse.
As long as we don't have a conflict with it going on that register.
Well, I don't disagree with that.
Well, this goal with me has always been that he's looking to find funds, funding, somehow funding through the historical society so to help us with the repairs.
And that's the purpose of getting it, right?
The pressure I've been getting from him, so. Because the money we got, I can recover. But the walls, that's, that could be substantial amount of money.
Is that inside or is it outside?
It's outside. It's above the, it's above the roof. But as it sits now, it's a bone, and if we do any kind of moving of the roof or removing the roof, we're going to have problems with the walls. The wall may fall.
The brick.
The brick.
The bricks falling.
Of structures, the structure sound is just, it's like a, you have a bricky base. That's the water and everything's deteriorating over the years. It's actually bowed out about the full foundation. That could be a concern. We go messing with the roof, we're going to open up something. It's a possibility we could open up, we would have expensive repairs, expensive stuffs. That's what we're looking for. We're going to have to get an engineer up there. We're going to have to spend some money to get an engineer up there and see what we're actually have to do and what the cost of that's going to be for you considering.
I think we need to go ahead and figure it out on the app so we can go ahead and get started.
Well, that's what we were waiting for. I thought the purpose of all this was for him to get some funding through the historical to help us with it, so that's, that's what I understood.
We can't even fix the roof until we fix the walls.
I would recommend that we don't even touch it until we get an engineer's approval.
I think we need to go ahead and get an engineer's approval.
Well, engineering, you know, that's not cheap. Something we need to consider or something we need to look at before we make any moves. Don't spend any money on that. Just give me the word, Rob, and I'll just see what you're going to do. If that's, if that's the route we're going to get an engineer's approval.
Yeah, because we wouldn't want the old bricks just coming down.
I actually have, I don't have your pictures with me, but I can hand them and share with you. I haven't seen them already, so you can actually.
Can we do that for the next meeting? Can, can we get some pictures and then I can forward it to the board so they can see it prior to the next meeting?
Right. I'll make sure we get that red car roofing, roofing guy that does all our inspections has to take pictures. And he's coming next week to report, so I'll get with you. Make sure we have a picture of y'all before next week.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, any other discussion in reference to the June monthly financial report? Can we get a motion to approve?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the June financial report.
Second.
The motion has been moved and properly seconded to approve the June monthly financial report. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion is carried. I believe she also, Ms. Jarrell also presented the QZAP report. Can we have a motion at this time to approve? Well, we didn't, we didn't say it on the last motion. We just said June monthly.
June financial.
June financial report, does that cover it, Mr. Oy?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
Okay, so we need a motion at this time to approve the QZAP report.
Madam Chair, I'd like to approve the QZAP report.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the QZAP report from Mrs. Jarrell. You've heard the motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion is carried. This time, we'll have the report of the superintendent, Dr. Bell?
Madam Chair, board members, at this time, we have a representative from ABM here tonight to give us an update on the performance audit, and I let him introduce himself, even though everyone knows who he is.
Dr. Chair, congratulations, and I stand in front of you every so often to let you know how you're doing with your energy savings associated with the last round of the performance contract. And right now, can I close? Uh, the slide right here, it kind of summed up very well. Right now, you're seven months, actually, end of May, you're seven months in your year, your most recent plot year. As we stand seven months in, we're missing our guaranteed savings by twelve hundred kilowatt hours, which is almost negligible. You're right now ninety-nine point nine ninety-eight percent of your year-to-date energy savings. So I went back to take a look at when you really start to see your savings get in. If you can run to the next slide. Yeah, the, basically, well, nobody has a hard copy of it, so.
We have.
We have.
We got it on the screen.
So what you'll see here is on the unit savings, you see the electricity box in the middle? You see the unit savings that go across, it starts in November at about eighty-six thousand, and then works its way over to sixty-five, one thirty-five, one twenty-five. As you go through there, really what you need to do to hit your overall year savings is you need to achieve seventy-seven thousand kilowatt hour savings per month. So you'll see some, some months are high, some months are low. Right now, seven months in, you're ninety-nine point nine ninety-eight percent of the way of where you need to be. So you're, you're just missing. Now, I went back and took a look at it. June, July, August, and September are usually your biggest savings months. So even though you didn't hit your seventy-seven thousand worth of savings in May, June, July, and August could very well be a hundred, a hundred thousand kilowatt hours of savings per month, each month. So I think you're doing fine. We're going to continue to monitor it. We have controls in the whole building so we can see exactly how the buildings are functioning. But there's no reason for me to believe that you're not right on track. Okay? I'll be back in front of you. Usually, as you can see, like right now, it's the middle of July, so we're talking about the end of May, there's a lag. You know, we need to get the bills and we need to compile all of it. So it'll probably be, you know, right after Thanksgiving. That'll be back in front of you, we'll hopefully go all the year at that time. But you're looking great, everything's good. Any questions?
So we'll probably experience a great savings during the summer because school is, school is out.
Yeah, your, your moderate parts, you know, your fall and your spring, it's just the equipment's not running as much, you know? But it's going to be, you know, a hundred degrees this weekend. So even though you might have the building setback, it just takes a lot. There's just a lot of savings to be having in extreme temperatures like this. You let me know, as always, just let me know if you guys have any questions, but keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Congratulations again.
Thank you. Dr. Bell? All right, we've had the ABM update professional development log.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, board members, you have the professional development log from Central Services for your review that also includes participants from the school, from each school as well. Any questions at this time?
Whoever's working, I'm moving too fast. You go back, go back. All right, thanks, Paul's right there. Could you, and you may have told us before, Dr. Bell, the CERN leadership? What actually is CERN leadership? Is that the, Mr. Edwards is not here. Mr. Phelps is here, I see a representative there.
Well, the CERN Academy, we have a partnership with Wem and Mary. And through Wem and Mary, we have, there's approximately fifteen school divisions that in this consortium, where we have trainings for administrators, trainings for teachers, other professional learning opportunities, specialist trainings, because right now, you know, we have some teachers who are involved in the math specialist program. So through CERN, through, through this initiative and this network, we're able to get some, some trainings and some opportunities to provide professional development to our personnel that would ordinarily cost us substantially. But at, by being a part of the consortium and everybody chipping in and, you know, paying a set fee, it gives us the opportunity to all come together and utilize these services. This summer, our team was a part of the leadership conference that went on the last week of June. We have principals that will be involved in the CERN Principals Academy that will be coming up. Mrs. Francis will be in the academy, as well as I think Mr. Carter will be in the academy as well. So each year, we can get these additional trainings for our staff.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments in reference to the professional development log? If not, Dr. Bell, principals' monthly report.
Madam Chair, board members, you also have the principals' monthly report for your review.
Any questions or comments, discussion?
All right. And lastly, we have the memorandum of understanding that we go through each month, where we give a overview of things that we did during the period from the last board meeting. So from June thirteenth to July fourteenth, under the areas of curriculum alignment, human resources, purpose and direction, as well as leadership and governance, you see a lot of activities and things that our staff was involved in. Any questions or concerns? Any questions or concerns? Pretending to the MOU update.
When, um, we received our regional report, Madam Chair, um, from Mrs. Raible, I suppose that that's correlated strongly with our MOU.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and the things that were cited for, um, completion and submission, where are we with all of those things, Dr. Bell?
Right now, Dr. Geiger had, is in the process, they're in the process of completing, going to the next phase with next steps. I think all the board members received that documentation of that last report. So now, as they prepare for this upcoming year, you all will see where we, where we are planning to move forward for this, for this, um, school year. Where some of the plans you saw within the cattle port presentation, uh, where you saw that we had done a, a growth plan, or what they call a, uh, transformation plan, transformation model that involves seven principles. We're going to take that a little further, and in our administrative retreat, we're going to do a division-wide growth model, which is aligned basically to a transformation model, which we believe will continue to grow our administrators and our staff members as we continue to move forward and improving student outcomes and just the overall proficiency, or efficiency of operations and things that we do. Everything that, of course, you all know that we're doing, we all, we are all aligned with the five goals that the board has set. And the five goals is easily defined through teach. So everything we do, that's what we're aligning with.
Dr. Bell, could you, uh, you might have read on your bullet here where you met with the executive director of Junior Achievement and how well it enhanced, uh, Franklin City School?
Yes, ma'am. Had a meeting with Kevin Will, uh, Mr. Will is the Executive Director of Junior Achievement, and he's also is on the Youth Services Committee Board, uh, with me through Opportunity Inc. And we discussed a possible partnership, starting with our elementary and middle school with Junior Achievement, which, uh, I had a similar partnership with them when I was principal in Richmond, where, as it pertained to economics and finance. So we're looking at some personal finance things where we can get our kids involved on how to budget and spend their own monies at an early age. So we're exploring those possibilities and looking at adding that to the curriculum in our elective, in our specials. And Junior Achievement will, they have their own curriculum with that, and they will come in and they will assist us in a partnership to make sure that our kids have everything they need.
Very nice. Dr. Bell, you have also log six sixteen revised.
That was the professional development log.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And then the, we've had the Principals' monthly report.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, comments? Okay, you want to move to unfinished business?
Madam Chair, Board members, at this time, Mrs. Wade will come forward with the VSBA policy updates, as well as a second reading to Policy DJR.
Um, you have before you your second reading and approval tonight, the May 2016 policy updates that, um, were sent to us and recommended from VSBA. Okay, questions or?
Under the grievance procedures, are we eliminating all of the forms of grievance? You know, that, uh, everything it seemed had a line drawn through it, most of the forms, and what if we are, what is replacing those?
You're, you're referring to, um, GBMA or, um, the support staff grievance policy? That would be, um, only used for support staff, non-certified staff. And basically, what this is doing is eliminating the regulation, because all the procedures now have been wrapped into the policy itself. It itemizes out exactly, you know, what takes place as far as the timelines that they have to request a hearing with the superintendent, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And so, yes, all the rest of that has been deleted.
So was that a recommendation from the Virginia School Voice Association that those forms would be eliminated?
Yes, ma'am, this all came from VSBA.
Right, because I don't know, it seemed to me that the forms somehow made employees more accountable. And then you were able to have an instrument that you could use to determine if you're meeting all of the requirements timed. With the elimination of the forms, it just seems, I don't know, I guess, just looking at the fact that it's not there. You don't have anything in writing, or do, will we have anything in writing to necess-
If you recall, um, last year or more, they did the same way thing with the certified staff grievance procedure. That all changed in the way with all of that as well. And so the support staff changes pretty much aligns mirror the certified staff grievance policy. Now, they did the same thing with the certified staff, they did away with all that, changed it. But this does come from VSBA.
Professional staff, the policy regarding description for employment of teachers, what about administrators?
Um, it didn't change anything for administrators, it just, um, just itemized out what the teacher professional staff definitions were. It did not change.
Didn't change anything for administrators.
Ms. Wade?
Yes?
Just because VSBA recommends it, doesn't mean we, we're not bound to, we can keep it as is if we so choose, and we have to go with what they say.
Um, certainly you as a board, you know, have the right to approve and formulate your own policies. VSBA, we're a part of VSBA Policy Service who provides us policy updates. Most of their policy updates are in response to some legal reference, um, change, some statute change that negates us having to change our policy in order to be in compliance with the statutes. Um, sometimes these policy changes just come as, um, you know, somebody reading through them because they haven't read through them in the last four or five years, and they just want to update them and reword them and change the wording a little bit. But the ones that come as a result of legal changes, you know, they're the ones that, I, I would think, you know, negate us having to do something so we can stay in compliance. Other than that, you know, like I said, the school board has authority to make your own policies.
I was just wondering, I mean, Ms. King has some valid questions there, I didn't know whether we could just, what we were bound to do.
Well, I feel, I feel very comfortable with your explanation, the explanation that Mrs. Wade gave, because it puts us on the same playing field as, uh, so happens across the state. If it were that, um, it was not that way, then probably I would have had a concern, but I didn't know, uh, and certainly did not recall that last year, we had eliminated the forms, so I think, you know, I'd rather have us, Mr. Counsel, to, um, go with what Virginia School Boards Association is recommending, because it takes a lot of work to change policies otherwise.
I'm good.
Would you like me to go on DJR?
Thank you, thank you.
Um, you have also that before you Policy DJR, which is our procurement, um, purchasing and procurement, um, policy regulation. As you all know, Policy DJ is our small purchasing policy. And Policy DJR is simply, um, an explanation, a written explanation for what we're already doing. It's not a new procedure, it wasn't created, you know, to be separate from, it's basically what has been in place, the practices that we have been using. But the fact is that we've just never had it in writing before. And so we decided to put it in writing so that it would bring consistency to what we do. It would give documentation for all of our, um, quotations and estimates that we get, and everybody would know, you know, board included. You could look in our policy manual and see what our procedures. And, um, we did survey some, um, area of school divisions, and they all use this same VSBA policy, because it is statute that purchases over 100,000 require RFP process, and that results in board approval. Excuse me, and then the purchases between 60,000 and 100,000, we obtain written quotes and estimates, and we document that. And then the superintendent serves as the agent of the board, he can approve those purchases. And then purchases less than 60,000, we always get quotes and estimates, we always, uh, hunt for prices, don't we, Ms. Jarrell? I mean, we.
Don't we, Ms. Kendrick?
On Walmart, 99 cents and then a dollar at a Dollar Tree, so just where we're at.
Walmart.
We do not buy anything without checking, not a balloon, not a, a tablecloth without checking and getting the most price we can. So purchases less than, um, than 60,000 then would be, um, again, we get quotes and estimates, and superintendent as agent of the board will approve that, those purchases as well. This just simply aligns, um, straight with Policy DJ, and it just serves as a, a procedure that outlines the details of that policy.
If, if we're already getting, you know, going to purchase a new price or practice using that as an example, under the small purchases, uh, number three under is $60,000. Large purchase, but would it be possible if we just went ahead, since we're already doing that anyways, go ahead and put whatever it is that you guys are exactly doing, whether you're, you know, like, like in number two, which has written quotations, re-recorded on a form, um, telephone, whatever. So would it be okay if we just went ahead and added that? Or whatever procedure you guys use to that section, just so, you know, John K. Gillett would know, you know, that it's actually happening, and we would have written documentation that it's happening, so that, you know, so there might not be any sense of, right. So if there's not any, you know, so nobody can accuse anybody, um, just to protect our staff and, and, and to make sure that we're actually doing those things. I know you're saying you're doing them.
Right.
Wonderful. But I think it would be nice if we had something over there where there was, you know, you had your forms that you filled out where you actually did it, so we had proof of it.
And, and we do have the whole thing for our, um, manual.
Right, that's great.
Telephone quote.
Right, that's great, just put it under there, that's, so that's, that's what we're doing, I think that would be important, just, you know? Just, we'll get together, Dr. Bell, the board, that.
Right, that's, that's, that's okay, so, it's the will of the board, so everybody will see.
Is that the will of the board of everybody else, Mrs. Gottwin's suggestion?
That's fine.
So you'd like to, you know.
I just wanted that, whatever it is that they're actually doing, I mean, I see that it does not leave the burden of making a good buying decision, but I want to, I just think it would be protection for you guys, or for whoever's doing the purchasing, that it actually happened, and there would be written documentation approved.
So I actually did a form that we used, the forms.
That showed that Walmart, it was 99 cents.
The procedures, in other words.
The procedure of it.
But we can add a little more detail in about what we do. And the forms would also, because we keep folders and, you know, when Mr. Custer prices stuff out, he fills out the forms and puts it in that folder, so if anybody ever asks him, he can pull documentation.
And it might be, um, that we want to table action on this particular, um, policy DJR until we get it back, because it might be some things then that are generated that the board would like to see added beyond whatever it is that you're adding, Dr. Bell. So we might want to, uh, table action on our policy DJR. Is that the will of the board?
I don't see the need to table. Does anybody else see the need to table? It's the second reading, as long as they're going to edit, make the changes, I'm comfortable with that. What about everybody else?
Bring it back to us next month with the changes, you know, even if we approve it tonight, just bring it back so we can see the changes were made, that's.
Well, I can email, I can email you the forms. I can email you, I can email everybody that, and you can see the forms.
I'm comfortable with that, yes.
And then we will see.
And we, we can see.
And you'll see it. So that, that's probably the good, uh, the best way, so board members have that archive. So if there are any questions, no, if anyone has a question, no, you're mistaken, we have that documentation. And I can pull it up to show you that we have the forms.
But my, my, my concern was that if you do that, and it's not, I mean, if you don't wish to table it, it's fine. But when you send it out to us, we can't all respond with any suggestions for additions or deletions or whatever.
Individually.
No, no, because we're approving tonight, if there are any other suggestions, we need to make those tonight. If we think we're going to make changes, then we would need to table.
I don't think any changes.
Do you all think?
No, not once we approve it.
No, once it's, once you, if you adopt tonight, the, uh, changes as made or sent out, which happens to create some concern, at some point in the future, you can always come back and amend the policy to incorporate whatever changes you think are necessary. But I do have the concern that Mrs. King has, has raised, uh, if Dr. Bell sends this out to you, you cannot respond, reply all, because then we've got an electronic meeting going on.
Can't do that. Individual.
Well. And, and so here's my concern, if, I'll pick on you, Ms. Jackson. If you send a response back to Dr. Bell, and then what's Dr. Bell going to do with it? Because if he sends it out to everyone, then you're really doing an electronic meeting, you see what I'm saying?
Yes.
And, and so you, there's, there's no way to have that communication, uh, that I think Mrs. King is, is talking about, uh, unless you come back to the board at some point and take a look at it as a group and make a decision, if, if another decision is necessary.
Doc, Dr. Bell, if we table it tonight, does that present a hardship to the school for another month?
No, because we do it anyway. We do, we do what we do anyway, we document.
I move that we table action on policy DJR for the consideration of a change.
All right, the motion has been moved and properly seconded, that we table action on file DJR, the purchasing and procurement procedures. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Did you all approve the VSBA policies?
No, we have not done that.
We didn't approve it.
Got into discussion on this one, all right? At this time, we need to entertain a motion to approve the VSBA policy.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the VSBA policy. You've heard the motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Mrs. Wade. New business? Delegate and alternate delegate selection. All right, VSBA Policy Services Agreement. We've all had a chance to review it. Any discussion? At this time, we entertain a motion to approve the VSBA Policy Services Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the VSBA Policy Services Agreement. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. All right, next item is 6.3, Authorization to Request Appropriation.
Madam Chair, Board members, Mrs. Jarrell will come forward for the authorization to request the appropriation.
Good evening, Ms. Jane.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Franklin City Public Schools received a tax grant notification for Division School Psychologists in the amount of sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars. In order to correct account for these funds, the fiscal year twenty sixteen seventeen school budget must be increased by sixty-two thousand five hundred. Please add this to the school board agenda for application to request appropriation. While the board approved the request of appropriation for expenditures from the city council.
And just to inform the board, this was the oversea foundation grant that we received to help fund our school psychologists.
But it says five sixteen, five, five one sixteen, through four thirty seventeen. But it's still all going towards this school.
Right, that's, that's their fiscal year.
That's theirs.
Yeah.
Any questions? More discussion? If not, we entertain a motion at this time to request an increase to the F Y twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school budget by sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars per the grant notification and the amount of sixty-two thousand five hundred for the Division School Psychologist.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the authorization, uh, to request appropriation for the school year twenty sixteen twenty seventeen school budget by sixty-two thousand five hundred. You've heard the motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jerell.
Next item on the agenda, six point four, Title Three Statewide Consortium.
Madam Chair, Board Members, this is a new form, a new application that we had to submit this year. And we need authorization for the board, from the board to move forward with this document. Mrs. Conaway will come forward to give you a brief description, a brief explanation of this Title Three Statewide Consortium in her new role.
Dr. Hall, the Vice Chair, Ms. Jackson, Stu Ward Millers, Dr. Bell, Melissa Williams. Tonight, I'm presenting to you the Title Three Part A Grant. The required uses of the grant is for professional development to teachers who teach English learners. And the grant money is also used to provide instructional materials, supplies, and equipment to assist English learners to have better access to the same instruction as all students and to help them attain English proficiency. Franklin City Public Schools is requesting these federal funds to send our E S L teacher to the Virginia Teachers of English to Speakers of Other Languages Conference, the James Madison University, and to purchase electronic media, curriculum resources, and instructional games. These items will be used to help Franklin City Public Schools' English learners become proficient in English and to have equal access to the same curriculum and instruction as students who is native to the stage. Are there any questions?
I'm just curious as to what we did, um, in the past, like the previous school year. I know you said this is new. Did we have programs, what were we doing before?
The grant application documents.
Okay.
It was a different format and what has happened. But we're a part of consortium and the consortium had its own documents, but those who are not in the consortium have Virginia Public Education documents. So the consortium felt to align their document and public education. So the process of filling out the application is different and the sending it to the board is different. But the, the same assurances, they, they, so we're not going anywhere.
Got you, got you.
It's just the application problem.
Okay, all right, that explained.
But tonight, we're asking that you, um, give us permission to proceed with this application.
Board Members, it's your pleasure. Any discussion, comments?
I make a motion to, to approve the Title Three Statewide Consortium application.
Second. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the Title Three Statewide Consortium Application for twenty sixteen twenty seventeen. You've heard the motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you so much. Okay, our next item of business, number seven is business by school board members. Seven point one, Important Dates to Remember.
Madam Chair, Board Members. I have placed under, or Mrs. Kendrick has placed under the important dates to remember, a budget work session in the month of August that I would like to have with the board to discuss, uh, the budget approvals from city council, as well as where we are with the carryover money, as I've discussed, um, some things with the city manager. So I would like to meet with the board to discuss those things. Um, of course, we know that the sal, that the raise was denied. So we have to discuss, I would like to discuss some options, possible options with you of that as well.
How long, how long, Dr. Bell?
Uh, it wouldn't take but an hour. But if we could look at something in August and that we all could agree on, that's at the will of the board wants to meet in August, or if, I mean, or you want to meet in September, but I feel like we don't need to wait, we need to do it before school starts.
I try.
That's what I feel.
Need to proceed.
I agree.
August fourth?
I'm trying to pull my calendar.
But August fourth?
She said August fourth. It's a Thursday. Oh, no, that's not good.
It's not good.
Oh, no, no, it is. That's not a month.
And, yeah, it's on the Thursday. It's on the Thursday. August the fourth.
August the fourth? Ms. King, Mrs. Jackson?
No, that's fine.
It's fine with me.
It's fine with.
August the fourth.
Is it good with everybody?
Yes.
Six o'clock?
Six P M. Six o'clock.
Is that good?
Yes. And I, I had a question in reference, oh, no, we're getting something. My question was in reference to the, uh, board retreat. I don't, did we ever establish a date? I believe we talked.
Then we used retreat as.
Did we use a retreat as, I mean, with V S B A? Okay, all right. So if we, if there's something else we need to implement in reference to the governance handbook, you all recall at the, uh, meeting with V S B A, there were some changes that were recommended to our governance handbook and I thought we were going to come back to talk about that and discuss.
I think we discussed it, I think we were just going to go with the changes.
Was that?
Yeah.
What you all recall? Okay. So that's been given to our board clerk?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or?
Dr. Bell, uh, uh, Madam Chairman. The, the carryover money that, I guess it was carryover money that city council has held. Is this something you're going to discuss on the?
On the fourth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else in dates to remember, Mrs. Kendrick, that we've missed?
No.
Okay. Any other business by school board members? I know we did, uh, some of us attended the conference on education recently. Anybody want to speak to that?
I thought the Vice President for Education from Apple made a fantastic presentation. It was just unbelievable. And of course, our people, uh, from J P King, Lisa, did a wonderful job
Yes.
with the string presentation.
Yes.
Parker and Collins, I mean, they had a great presentation. There was a lot of interest in it. It was excellent.
Very good. You can tell they were knowledgeable and they were, they were very engaging. I always look at that, whether you can keep the audience's attention. Other people at the other tables were looking, you know, to see what they were talking, very engaging. And they actually stood up, I'll say that, because most of it, you know, is roundtable discussion. So most of the facilitators were sitting, they took the opportunity to stand up.
Yes.
And I, I was impressed with that. It was very nice.
I like their goal too, the, um, Mr. Parker's goal is to get rid of tier three.
Tier three, oh, yes, they need to stress that. Ms. Jackson, would you like to add something?
Well, I enjoyed the entire session. I went to, believe it or not, five or six.
Sure, you're a master.
I've heard a lot of things, you know, how some schools are incorporating technology into, uh, teaching children with disabilities. And they, uh, learning to express themselves using the iPads and everything and having a great time. And we did our hands-on thing, listening to your projects on the iPads and so, so that was great. And another one I went to was incorporating literacy in science and, and elementary school. And they were having a great time with kids.
Any other discussion, comments? I don't, I think we have all the dates. So we've agreed to meet on August the fourth, six P M for the.
What about meeting about the superintendent's evaluation?
Yes, we do have to come back and meet for that as well. Now, do you all want to meet on the same date? You want to choose a different date?
Well. Madam Chairman.
Yes.
To me, it's going to be hard for us to do this until we get the final S O L results. Because to me, that's a big item.
So when are we anticipating the results, Dr. Bell?
Preliminary comes out tomorrow. Official, if will, not official results, but preliminary tomorrow. Official results, uh, August, Mr. Phelps, August.
September.
September.
We'll leave it at September.
Yeah. Because we have to, because our graduation is not until August fourth, our summer graduation.
How many did you expect to graduate August graduation?
Three, I don't know.
Three? Oh, that's good.
And is that with O C here?
There's two of the O C, I think, right? Or one, two or one, I think it's two. They're not included in the three, are they? Yeah, because it's two that they're working on right now in O C.
I think that we had one last year, wasn't it, for summer school? Oh, yes.
To do that evaluation, how long do we have to stretch it out?
We can't wait until September.
We want to try to get it done in August.
Well, we used the preliminary at test scores last year. We used the preliminary.
August sixteenth is when D O E releases statewide and division school pass rates. It's released to the media on September fourteenth.
But we can use the preliminary.
We used the preliminaries last year.
And so you said August first, you'll have the, we'll have the preliminaries.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. Well, do we want to look at, um, let's look at dates in August. We're meeting on August the fourth. A regular meeting is August eighteenth. How does August, what was that? I prefer to do it all on the same night. That's my preference, I don't know about anybody else.
Me too.
I'm good with that.
It's fine with me too.
Okay, I'm good with August fourth.
I'm good with August fourth.
Is that the, the majority?
Yeah.
August the fourth will also include the superintendent's summative performance.
So we don't actually have to do anything ourselves, right? Not until August, not till we meet August the fourth.
What I would say, you want to at least look at.
Well, I, I don't mean like that, you know. I didn't mean that, but you know, we don't, we don't actually fill out anything and turn it in.
Well, what I would suggest, and this is the will of the board, is that we peruse this document, start gathering your documentation, looking at items, so you don't have to actually put it on here, but I would say at least start gathering all of that.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Bell, are you going to forward us your documentation?
Yes, sir.
He typically does.
Oh, what?
I can't do it.
No, just please send a regular email.
I want a regular email too, please don't send one of those. I never can pull it up.
I can put it in, uh, all in the Word document and send it.
We appreciate that, appreciate that. If no other questions, comments?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Hold on, I have one other thing. Before, before that motion, before that motion. I need it close to me. Okay, right, right before we have the motion to adjourn, I would like to read the mission of Franklin City Public Schools, because we want to keep that in our hearing and I believe we did, did discuss this in our board, uh, retreat. So if, I'm trying to memorize it, uh, low transparency myself. So I think we should all be on board with our mission. So let's read our mission statement tonight. The mission of Franklin City Public Schools is to work in partnership with students, families, and the community to provide enriching opportunities to empower individual learners to maximize their potential in becoming critical thinkers, productive citizens, and lifelong learners. And I believe we can do that with the implementation of technology, environment, achievement, communication and collaboration, home, school, and community relations. If no other discussion or comments, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We've, the motion has been properly moved and seconded for adjournment. Any discussion? Having heard none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you.